Good evening. Welcome you all to this November 3 meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission, and I ask that you rise with us and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Sommers, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Benberry?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Schramke?
Here.
Mr. Shadle?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Chair Chrisillas?
Here.
Mr. Morrison, I believe you have the minutes motion?
Yes, ma'am. I move that the reading of the minutes for October 6, 2014 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting, as prepared by the Secretary, be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Wade. I would note that there is a correction for the listing of the absence of Vice Chair Schramke, but that was included in the minutes we were sent out. Any questions? Any more changes? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye.
Our first item of business is the SBA Communications Public Hearing. Ms. Schramke?
I move that this commission receive and file the application of SBA Communications, Inc., for approval of a proposed 195-foot monopole telecommunications tower located at 158 County Park Road. I further move that the requested approval be given in compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah zoning ordinance.
Second.
Second by Benberry. Do you have a presentation?
Good evening. My name's Belinda Bodie. My address is 1022 Highland Colony Parkway, Ridgeland, Mississippi, 39157. Just want to tell you a little bit about our proposal. SBA does have this proposal before you. They are constructing the structure. The actual tenant that will be on the tower will be Verizon Wireless. And the reason for this request is Verizon is looking for a location kind of further this way down Hinkleville Road to actually offload. They have a capacity problem with their existing site called Paducah Mall, which, if y'all are familiar with, is actually up there by the interstate, over by the hotels on, I want to go Colony Crossing, but that's not right.
Omen.
Yeah. Over there, and that's where Verizon is, they currently are at, and they'll stay there. But they just need something kind of coming this way down Hinkleville Road to help with all the users that they have in that area. And actually, I don't know if any of y'all have Verizon phones. My work phone happens to be Verizon. As I was coming toward the meeting and I got to County Park Road and Stuart Nelson, I noticed my bars. I could tell the in-building and in-car coverage in that area definitely subsided once I got a little bit further away from their existing site. I did, well, at the time, had one phone call from one landowner, Mr. Vowell. He has a Vowell Insurance Agency over there. And his concern was, he just wanted to make sure that we did not interfere with his wireless Internet, which I told him we would not. And when I told him who the carrier was going to be, he was quite pleased. He said that's who his service was, and he said he couldn't even use his phones at his office. So I do believe I addressed his concerns. I told him if he had anything else, to please call me back, but I haven't heard from him. But like I said, we did speak kind of at length about the need for the site there and just assuring him that we would not interfere with his wireless Internet. And I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I see this 190 feet, 95 feet.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there different heights for different towers? Is this standard or?
There are different heights, but that's usually dictated by what the carriers need. And in this case, in order to kind of connect with the existing site over there, they're roughly at, right at 200 feet there. But the heights vary depending on what the carriers' needs are. So I mean, I've built them as low as 100 feet in very heavily dense urban areas, up to, you know, 350 feet in very rural areas. But typically, for a tower that we're requesting a monopole, they usually go up only to about 200 feet.
And how much is the other, how tall is the other one that you referred?
Just a second, and I can tell you, that one is a self-support. And let me tell you, let me get my map here. That site is actually just under 200 feet at 199 feet.
When will that be up and running?
I'm sorry?
When will that be up and running?
Of course, we still have to get our waiver of subdivision, which I believe is possibly in two weeks, if the surveyor gets the plat done. And then, of course, the building permit. Honestly, I would suspect probably for them to begin construction first quarter of next year, just given with winter coming on, and you never know what the season will be, but definitely after the first of the year.
I noticed the same thing you mentioned there about twice. It happened to me twice, too, today.
Mm-hmm.
Now, will this monopole be available for other carriers?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the drawings that we submitted, but it is available. It has slots for at least three additional carriers on the tower.
Right.
And I noticed that you sent letters out to the surrounding people. Did you have any responses back on that?
Other than the phone call, or the, actually, you received the email and forwarded it to me from Mr. Vowell. That's the only contact I had. But I believe you said you had one other phone call today?
I got a call from Ms. Hall today. She might be here. But the question was about ingress, egress, and I told her it was going to be off County Park Road, not Stuart Nelson, where her house is at, her business is at. And that seemed to, quite any fears that she had. It was the only comment.
The other question I have has to do with Barclay Regional Airport. I know that you've sent them a letter. Have you had any input? It's probably just letting them know the height of the pole is probably not going to be anything.
At this point, no. I have not heard back from them. I did, like you said, send the letter and also to the Kentucky Airport Commission. Now, the Airport Commission said that they were fine with it, and they did not have to issue any approvals because it was under 200 feet. But no, I have not heard back directly from the airport. But they also will get notice through our FAA filings. So, and to my knowledge, we've had no negative feedback from them as well.
Does anyone else have any questions to ask?
I don't know if it's of any concern to anyone. There were several things that were kind of, will be added when we receive them.
Yeah. Yeah, some of that, yes. And some of it has actually been provided.
That was in that second packet that was separate from that?
Yeah, and I've kind of let SBA know, don't make me do that again. Make sure that I have everything complete. I don't like submitting incomplete, but when their client is very forceful, unfortunately, I have to kind of say, okay, I'll do it, and probably get my hand slapped in the process. But...
The only one I was a little concerned with, survey of the property, seems pretty...
Which has been provided, and then, yeah, and then we'll get the plat in two weeks, yes.
Do you have a comment? If you did, please come up and speak. Give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Marshall Green, 161 Stuart Nelson Park Road. Okay, we're the only resident that lives in that neighborhood. Will it affect us in any way as far as the zoning?
No, not zoning-wise, but do you have any other? Health-wise?
Frequency.
Frequency. No, actually, it won't. We're strictly regulated, and the federal government really takes a hard stance on that, so make sure that we comply with all their emissions requirements. But really, the emissions are actually less than your microwave in your home. So no, you won't have any effects there. And I believe she addressed, we are not changing the zoning or anything of the property or any of the property around it.
Right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle, I believe you have the next item of business, Ophthalmology Group?
Yes. I move that this commission approve the location of the ingress/egress of the ophthalmology group as shown on the site plan dated August 4, 2014.
Second by Schramke.
I could bring the commission back up to speed, especially for Mr. Bradford, who wasn't here in July of last year. A motion was made as part of the rezoning for this property from R1 to R4 to review the ingress/egress at the time. This is the new site plan that we have in, and it's across from Colonial Drive. The minimum would be 30 feet, and they have more than that. We was out there today. It's at least eight to 10 seconds for cars to get before they turn on the con, and the speed limit's 35 miles an hour.
Eight to 10, you said?
Mm-hmm.
That is directly across from Colonial?
Yes.
Okay, so there's just one ingress, this?
Well, and on Pecan Court, on the right-hand side. But that's for their employee parking. Anything to add?
I don't know if there's anything to add, really, but I'll answer any questions. I know on the right-hand side, that portion of road has got the guardrail, the one with the, the old pecan drive. Where at? The old con, right-hand side, about midway up that road is the guardrail.
Here?
Yes.
Well, they're only going to have...
Right. I just want to, we're never going to open this road up.
No, not to my knowledge.
Not to our knowledge, the way it's designed. What's going here looks like it's even closed off even more, and that's...
Yeah, there's no access off of Old Pecan, other than the new cul-de-sac that was put in for Pecan Court, I guess.
And what all is out Colonial Drive? Is there much traffic that comes down that road?
All residential, pretty much. Single-family homes, primarily.
There is some access, I believe, to go around to...
Lindbergh Court, I believe.
No, it's, they're just looking for here to be able to do employee parking. This is the primary entrance, would be.
Okay. There's another road going down here, and I was thinking about it.
Way back around here.
How do you get back to Westvale?
Does that end up taking you back to Westvale?
Takes you to, what's the name of that hill?
Westvale's off...
Hill Crest or something.
Spring.
Okay, it's another one.
Yeah. That goes back to, I believe it's Lindbergh.
Okay. That's right, because this used to come all the way out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just for information's sake, what monument is laying on its side? Is this Monument Disturbed laying on its side on 62?
That was, that's a right-of-way monument. The concrete post you see along highways, but, well, it depends on if you're urban or rural, but they stick up about that far. It's about four inches square.
I mean, I'm thinking monument, you know, historical...
No. It's not historical, no, it's a right-of-way marker.
The concern at the public hearing on this was, which I wasn't here, but via YouTube, I was able to look at some of the comments from the public hearing, and some of the residents showed up to express concern about the turn lanes and the traffic being too dense right there, being that close to 62. And I assume from the staff recommendation that those traffic concerns are not...
Can I address that?
Sure.
That is correct. Today, when I was out on site, we timed the cars mainly going west on 62 and turning right onto Pecan. As soon as we saw the cars turn right there, generally, the timing was between eight and 15 seconds, depending upon the driver. A majority of them were around 10 to 11 seconds. Actually, with the entrance being pulled about 100 feet closer to US 62, you actually had better sight distances slightly than you had before because you're not so far around the curve, and you have direct sight distance or sight lines to the actual intersection where the person turning right is, right is. So in my opinion, the situation's actually better, even though you're 100 foot closer to US 62. You're still over 320 feet or so from that intersection to this. And typically, in the city, on urban sections, we like access points to be, you know, approximately 200 feet or so. Obviously, we have a lot that are a lot closer, but 200 feet's optimum. Here, we're about 320 feet, I think.
Have you all heard anything else from any of the residents around that area?
No, not in a while.
I'm wondering if at some point there could be, if there is, if a problem develops, we don't know that a problem will develop, but if it did, any kind of slow, you know, hidden entrance or something like that, not that the entrance is going to be hidden because certainly on that hill, you can see it.
I don't anticipate any problems, but if there was, certainly, the Engineering Public Works Department, they could study the traffic situation there and see if any other type of traffic devices need to be installed or not.
The second one, for the employees, when they're making a left, to get out, is it pretty visible?
Yeah. I honestly didn't even go down and check that one out, as it was further down Pecan.
Right.
Actually, I think it's more visible than the main entrance. The main entrance is on a hill, and that's the primary reason, is because of the curve. But as you said, moving closer...
It flattens out quite a bit from there up to the intersection also.
Right. As it gets down to the other, to Pecan, to Pecan Court, it does flatten out quite a bit. So, you know, your sight distance is quite a bit further.
Making a left turn for Pecan Court, you can see.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. On 62. Any other questions, comments? Does anyone else would like to comment? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford, I believe you have the next item of business.
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Paducah Properties, LLC and Walter and Carla Sorrels for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 430 Adams Street and 508 520, 522, and 526 South Fifth Street. I further move that the requested approval be given in compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second.
Second by Shadle. Anything you need to say?
Yeah, but you can...
We're just looking for you for a comment.
I'm sorry, I was kind of reviewing the drawing myself. What's happening here is the owners of Track C, the Sorrels, are going to convey what's showing up as Track B to the owner of Track A, Paducah Properties. And then, we're also, the Sorrels own the small tract with the house on it along Fifth Street, and we are abolishing an old lot line that is right next to the house, moving in over to where the new line is established, and then extending that across the rear line, extending it across to hit that line. It's confusing.
There's a notation here of an existing wooden fence. Is that going to stay, or will that be demolished in...
I would believe that's going to be demolished. I believe they plan on kind of making a, maybe pavilion or gathering area for community meetings or picnics or whatever, back in the extra property in the back. So I would think that would be taken out.
And will the sheds stay that's on Track A?
I'm not sure.
I just wondered about the, I knew that you had said that they were probably going to expand the apartment complex. Is that part of the plan?
It's not my, it's not my understanding they are.
I thought I read that.
I thought I read that, too.
They may be, but...
Yeah, I do, too. Yeah.
Oh, that 3,513 square feet, that's lot area, not building area.
Okay.
That makes a difference.
So from my understanding, this is just a preliminary abolishing the lines, and then after which will be a rendering made and proposal for some kind of structure to go in that area.
The only structure I'm aware of is maybe a possible, some kind of covered pavilion, like a picnic area or whatever. This is just basically getting rid of some old lot lines and establishing some new ones. There is going to be a conveyance from the Sorrels to Paducah Properties, but I mean, this will be the final action on the property lines.
And there's no, any encroachments within setbacks and so forth that are currently there and not being altered in any way? We're not moving a line that I see closer to...
We're actually helping, Track D is actually helping the situation.
Yes, you are. You're creating a better situation as far as Track D is concerned.
Yes.
And we are dedicating the radius at the intersection of Adams and Fifth Street.
That's the way I understood it. I just want to make sure that we weren't creating any other problems, bettering existing problems.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry, I believe you have the last item of business.
Yes. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Ed Musselman for approval to waive 121 parking spaces at 3121 Broadway pursuant to Section 126/71b 2 of Paducah zoning ordinance. I further move that this commission find the waiver of the 121 parking stall should have no negative impact on the property, and the Coke plant is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and 55 parking places can be provided on-site. And Independence Bank, located at 3143 Broadway, has verbally agreed to allow the Coke plant to utilize their 57 parking spaces on nights and weekends. And totally nearby street parking on LaBelle Avenue, Broadway, and Jefferson Street is 61 vehicles. And historic tax credits cannot be used to help rehabilitate the Coke plant if any original portion is demolished for parking. The Midtown area has undergone revitalization as a whole, and the Coke plant is part and will help to further facilitate that revitalization. The Coke plant is being rehabilitated into a mixed-use building, and the Coke plant is surrounded by residential neighborhoods where pedestrian activity can and will occur. The Paducah Commission, Planning Commission, has approval to waive the parking requirements at 3121 Broadway. I further move that the application be approved.
Second.
Second by Morrison. Do you have any comments?
Certainly, and if you prefer, but I certainly appreciate you all hearing this, and it's been a long time coming for us. Certainly appreciate Independence Bank's role in creating the opportunity for us to reasonably apply for this waiver. I have not prepared a formal presentation. I presented a letter to the Planning Commission, but I can field any questions that you have regarding the situation.
You've been pretty thorough in your letter, and we do have that, but in case there are any questions, it's always nice to ask something.
Please.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not sure if it's to you or to Josh. The phrase, "Parking is requested to be waived for existing and future tenants," it bothered me a little bit.
What that means is the Dry Ground Brewing Company is the only tenant that's in there now. Of course, other tenants are coming, where the space is broken down into the event space and the future restaurant and that sort of thing. Those are coming down the pike, and those have a calculated parking that goes with a sit-down restaurant or event space or something to that effect. So that was all taken into account.
For our current, current one occupant that should open shortly, we have more than adequate parking already provided, so a waiver wouldn't be necessary for the only current. We've proposed, based on occupancy of certain square footage, on high occupancy, low occupancy, and Josh has done the math to put that, put those numbers in front of you.
I just wanted to assure you, my questions are not in any way taking away from what you're doing. It's a wonderful project, and I think it's very good.
Thank you very much.
And after I read all of this, I drove around over there, and what it finally sunk into me, it's a neighborhood. I mean, there is a lot of parking on the side streets and things like that, so I was okay with that. I would like it better if the bank had given you a written agreement, but I understand their, their point of view on that, but...
They've been very, very gracious and...
So therefore, I assume that the businesses that you're talking about are not going to be operating much daytime?
I don't believe the 57 parking spaces will be necessary during the daytime, so I believe that ultimately, I feel that the parking that we're providing, street-side parking, really is reasonable during peak hours of restaurant time, whenever people are on a wait, events such as wedding receptions and what have you. I can see that being, being the peak times, and the bank would not be open during those hours.
I was surprised at the number of parking spaces you're actually going to be able to provide in the building. I knew there were going to be parking spaces outside the building in the back, where you tore down the addition that was not original to the building and certainly not necessary. But that was amazing to me that you were going to be able to provide indoor parking.
It's been a, been a real nice, kind of a blessing in disguise, silver lining. It's 18,000, roughly 18,000 square foot that we don't need to renovate. So it's, it's helping solve a problem to where we can renovate the building from front all the way to back in one phase without the additional cost and trying to figure out how to navigate that area. So it's really been, it's just worked out perfectly. The warehouse space is natural. We don't have to do anything to it to make it indoor parking, other than add some blowers for exhaust. So for the restoration piece and for the, you know, historical accuracy, it keeps it consistent, and then it helps to solve the problem that, you know, we don't want to, we certainly don't want to burden the community. It's absolutely the opposite. We feel like filling the streets is going to make it desirable. We feel like it's going to make it feel community rather than, you know, a burden.
If you're fully occupied, have you had an estimate that, kind of gives a rough estimate of how many parking spaces are needed if you're fully occupied?
Um...
Say on a weekend, on a Saturday?
Okay, that, actually, that math was done by Mr. Summer.
It's in your report.
And so I apologize, but the equivalency, I can tell you, we're looking at no more than a 5,000-square-foot event space for high occupancy. We're looking at roughly four, four to five... We're looking at roughly four, four to 5,000 square foot high occupancy for restaurant. And then, uh, Dry Ground Brewing Company, we're going to be occupying roughly 3,500 square foot with a small portion of that being high occupancy for guests. And the remainder of the building, we're looking at retail and business use, a lot of low occupancy uses to push that down. So, um, I answered the questions to Mr. Summer in that manner and he did the calculations.
The, uh, total is 176. That's for everything. Now, the event space by itself is 50. And we use the calculation that we use for hotels and motels, for their ballrooms and event rooms. That's the calculation that we have is one per 100 square feet of that. And that's how that 50 was come up with.
I too had a, had a concern like Commissioner Schramke about the, uh, parking over in Independence Bank and concern about the verbal commitment. What if that parking, uh, for some reason becomes not available? What's that going to do? I'm just.
I believe the only, my, my personal feeling in the conversations with Mr. Evans, the only way that that's going to become unavailable is due to poor action on my part. I don't, I don't believe that there's any intent to, to ever do that. Uh, I completely understand they don't want an expressed easement, written or otherwise. And again, that, I believe that's for 30, 40, 50 years down the road. They don't want to have an encumbered property and I completely understand. So, um, as far as immediate impact, I don't believe that there's going to be any, any concerns there. We plan to, to make sure that the property's as clean Monday morning as it was Friday afternoon and we'll, we'll honor that neighborly agreement that they've, they've made to us.
Had a question about the, the street and this might be beyond what you're looking at, but I thought I read in here somewhere that some of those parking spaces are no longer clearly marked?
Uh, almost.
Because they haven't been used?
Almost none of them are.
Will they be? And maybe this goes beyond our discussion here, but will they be marked and?
That hasn't been looked into at this time. Typically, on-street parking is against the curb where you're not supposed to park. Usually, the curb's actually painted yellow.
Right.
But at this point, we really haven't looked into that, Ms. Evans.
Well, that's a good problem to have, isn't it?
Yes.
Would be, yes.
I, I think that there's parts, if you drive down, uh, if you drive down Broadway, if you look, um, there's a turning lane on the side closest to Coke, the Coke plant, on the side closest to Broadway City Pub, the Star. It's the same width and there is no, there's no turning lane. So, I mean, you're only talking a couple of spots here and there, but it's things that we don't even, we don't even look at. And it's something that me as a passing citizen, I certainly wouldn't. But really trying to scrutinize the issue for this, this matter. There's parking a lot of places that we just don't use. Jefferson Street is.
If it was something like a big wedding reception, something like that, people would find, they would find the off-street parking if everything else was full.
That's our belief, ma'am. And, and for a large event, I, I certainly staffing a valet of sorts, if, if there's something we need to address, we, we can operationally address those on one-off situations.
Have been other events in that neighborhood where they've done shuttle service from First Baptist Church. So that's always an option.
Sure. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Abstain.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye. I think it's important for people to know why Mr. Wade abstained. He's an employee of Independence Bank and so he, as such, he can't vote on this particular issue. Is there any other business to come before us tonight?
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. If there's no other business, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.